The first item is the presentation by New Jersey Reentry Court.
I didn't hear you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Come please, join us up here. Okay. It's your floor.
Sure. Thank you, I'm Brian Gilry. I'm a Facility Director for New Jersey Grant Corporation. My colleague, Private Ryan. We're recently opened in Neptune City, so we're servicing all of Monmouth County.
You're welcome.
Idea of our client, we have a very important area. Very basically, what we do is help anybody with criminal background, no matter how minor or major. If you're back to work, if you've got identification, you can get a side relationship with your source for role of legal service. We have a building in the city, Route 35. Our clients attend, our clients attend, work at 5:00, they call it an orientation meeting. Starting to open that week. Front row, back row, everything to the stage, there are many barriers and like criminal background. So, we're ready to use, in preparation, how to answer the criminal background, other things. Hopefully be a big part of the community, help get as many people back in orbit as we can. That's important, we have people who give you productive lives, we can go back to some more. Participate in society, we know where everybody else does. Some of that stigma, criminal background.
Yeah, I'm gonna, my role as employment specialist, really what we want to do is we want to reach out to the business community and educate and inform business owners and employers about the realities of the marketplace. We all know that the employment rate has dropped dramatically, especially in recent weeks. So, we want to address that by letting employers know that there are upwards of 70 million people in this country who have been through the court system, through the criminal justice system. Many of these people have credible skills and talent and ability, they can do things. And so, employers need to understand the bottom line in that respect, that there's an untapped market of skilled labor that's being basically ignored. So, we want to brush aside as many of those stigmas and stereotypes as possible. Help employers see the benefit of employing people who have been through the system and so forth. Give them a chance, let them see what they can do. And let them contribute to the local economy and the tax base, because that makes a lot more sense, I think we would all agree. Rather than drain from the reserves, how about contributing to the reserves? So, we serve as a bridge and a gateway towards that end. So, we appreciate your support and we invite you to come visit us. We're located at 68 Route 35, just across from Pete Melvin's. At Farm's Pizza, good pizza by the way. See us, our doors are open Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 5:00, you're all welcome to come and see us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is a great program desperately needed in the greater Asbury Park area, be it Monmouth County. So, so happy when we met three, four weeks ago at St. Stevens Church. Former Governor McGreevy was there. It was just so good to know that you guys are so close. Wish you were in Asbury, Neptune City, this is a redstone's throwaway. And the numbers, I mean, it costs $55,000 a year to keep somebody in jail. Or, they're doing all this on less than $2,500 per person. So, I mean, it's just like, this is a win-win for not just Asbury Park, Neptune, this is a win-win for the entire state. So happy that you're part of us and we're part of you. Anything the city could do to help you, you have our total commitment. And, haven't visited yet, I know it's on the second floor. I'm gonna make it one day. It's just been a little bit hectic, but again, I can't thank you enough. And, if anybody else has anything to say, it said thank you and greetings and anything you know, need from Asbury Park, please reach out to us. Do not wait every two weeks for a council meeting, pick up the phone, call me, call the city manager. Whatever we can do to make this work, because it has worked in other areas of the state. We want this to work in Monmouth County, especially our region. So, again, I cannot personally thank you enough.
Thank you, thanks very much.
And I also want to thank you tremendously for coming when you did come to McGreevy's talk about reentry. And I'd also invite you to come back on the nights and the days that we do expunged nets at St. Stevens and offer your services, because there are so many people who are coming in who are looking for some hope. So, I thank you again for what you're doing.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
City managers report on issues raised at prior meetings.
I have none at this time.
Special events applications, Lysia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is for the Grassroots Cannabis Forum to be held in Kennedy Park on July 7. Next is VNA's Annual Community Day, held on June 2. Third is the Monmouth Ocean County Wear Orange Rally, to be held in Springwood Park on June 2. Next is the Deliverance Temple Church Asbury Park Day, to be held on June 23 in Springwood Park. Next is the Sunset Lake Commission Gathering, to be held on May 20 on St. John's Island. Run for the Arts 5K on September 15. And Second Baptist Church would like to do three community events. First one being on June 16, which would be a community service providers forum. Second would be a community day to celebrate their end of summer camp program. And third would be a community worship service day on September 2. Lastly, we have two weddings, one on September 21 on Sixth Avenue Beach and the second on May 20 on Sixth Avenue Beach. Are there any questions?
To be clear, Lysia, for the Asbury Park Day, that is not in any way a city-sponsored event?
Correct, it is not.
And it's not called Deliverance Table Temple Asbury Park Day, it's just called Asbury Park Day?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions? Say it.
Do you have agendas for this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, there's resolutions to adopt the permissible budget. Resolution 179, moving up to the agenda, is a special event application. 181 is a credit to a sewer account. Resolution 182 is recognizing no bids were received for the collection of more debt. This is because of administrative act. Resolution 183 is terminating a sewer account for 722 equipment. And Resolution 2018-184 is approving companion animal welfare pledge. This pledge is part of Sustainable New Jersey, that the city recognizes companion animals for individuals that need it and that we are accepting municipality in that. Is there any questions on the consent items? Moving on to individual resolutions, 185 is the improvement.
Well, Michael, do you want to move out the special events and vote on them separately? Or do you want to vote on them all together?
Cindy usually yes before we vote.
Okay.
Resolution 185 is the payment of bills. 186 is entering into an MOU with Tilsan/Verizon to replace four city-owned rifles with four of their own for the Wi-Fi project. Resolution 187, I'm going to ask to be tabled for this evening. Resolution 188 is the expansion of place-to-place transfer of the hotel liquor license at 210 Fifth Avenue. Resolution 189 is the purchase of surveillance and access control systems. This is upgrading the security within this building. Resolution 190 is authorizing competitive contracting to procure vendors to operate a pilot valet parking service. The transportation manager, Mr. Michael Manzella, and myself have been talking about valet parking over the last year. We don't have a place in mind, we don't have agreements in mind, but we want to start to try to at least get some of the administrative paperwork out of the way. We're gonna hope to be meeting with property owners over the next two months, try to come up with solutions in a valet service. Once we get close to that, we would issue a competitive contract and the city council would have final say in everything. We will bring it for you before the RFP is issued, if we can actually get this going. But we just want to at least try to get some of the paperwork out of the way on this day and age. Resolution 191 is an agreement for 201, 203 Eighth Avenue, the waterfront redevelopment area. This is for the leasing of land for the city from I-Star. Moving on to ordinances for second reading public hearing, staff is recommending that all of these ordinances be tabled. The Waterfront Amendment Plan ordinances, which is 15 and 20, will, are part of a larger amendment that needs to be adopted simultaneously, we're hoping that that will be at the next meeting. Resolution 2018-21 is the special, is the development fees, which we need court approval. So, this one will be carried, we'll be requesting to be tabled until we get court approval for it. And then, 2018-26 is the special assessment, which we've been looking for. So, we're requesting that all these ordinances be tabled for tonight. Sorry, questions on the resolution?
Matters by city council?
So, I have a couple here. On Saturday, May 12, from 9:00 to 11:00, volunteers are needed to help plant shrubs and bushes in the new art park. It's at 1 Atkins Avenue, it's really cool. Our DPW guys have been working on it and can use everyone's help tomorrow morning, Saturday morning. And then, on Saturday, May, Sunday, May 20, the Sunset Lake Commission and Sunset Lake Conservancy are having a meet and greet on St. John's Island in the park from 4:00 to 6:00. Sunset Park, that's it.
I want to congratulate the Salt School for their graduating 94 students who took part in their training program and we're looking forward to working at the Asbury Lanes when it reopens. A number of them have been hired. And then, the Salt School held a second Saturday of an opportunity for employers within the city to come and interview folks that were not hired initially. So, I just want to thank the Salt School for being a really good partner in the city and helping together, of course, development. And then, I'd also like to tell you that a wonderful event that took place on Saturday with, it's a partnership with NJ PAC, Madison Marquette, Asbury Park Schools District, and the city, where the Alvin Ailey Group came down and taught dance. And it took place at the high school and it was absolutely amazing, from the smallest child to adults. And at the end of the day, we had an opportunity to learn our dances and then to perform for the audience. So, and this is just the first of many events of this sort that are gonna be taking place in the city. So, I just invite you, the next time that this is presented, I know in short notice, we had to do it within two weeks. But the next time that it comes, it comes to the city, please come out, you will have so much fun. And there's nothing like the performing arts.
Did you dance?
I sure did. I have video.
I want to see it. If everybody doesn't know, Yvonne is one heck of a dancer. I mean, Yvonne walks, so I mean, God bless her. Jesse?
Yes. July the 18th, 2018, Asbury Park Recreation will be sponsoring their first annual fashion show. And tickets should go on sale in another week or so, and your flyers will be out around the city. And we look to have you and participate with us, we'll be more than thankful.
I just want to thank the center who held their 25th AIDS Walk on Sunday, so 25 years. Members of the center have been putting on the AIDS Walk in, in or near Asbury Park.
Okay, and as I say, it's every weekend from here on out, there's so many things going on. So, I think most of them have been covered. Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00, at the Senior Center is the Haitian Pride Celebration. So, if anybody can make that, deeply appreciated. And, I believe that's all I have. No, wait a second. Saturday the 19th is Super Safe Summer.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
In Springwood Park.
Springwood Park. And then, 2:00 to 6:00, St. John's Island. And that gets us to the next council meeting. Okay, thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
Thank you, there's two items tonight. The mayor had neglected to mention that the city just received, literally before this meeting, a $325,000 grant from New Jersey Car and Transportation for Wayfinding signage as part of the transit bill's designation. He handed me the paperwork that we received, the award at 4 o'clock before closed session. So, shortly you'll receive a copy of that award notification. It'll take time, but it's for wayfinding and branding the city as, you know, a welcoming place. Additionally, there is a community planning event at the Art Park, which is the new passive pocket park created by the city in conjunction with the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. And funding from HUD, volunteers are asked to come out on Saturday, May 12, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to help plant. The meeting location will be 1 Atkins Avenue. That had to be stated as such to be part of the minutes for Sustainable New Jersey. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Matters by the city attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
At this time, we'll break until 7 o'clock. Good evening, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Asbury Park City Council. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast Governor's Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody who wishes to come up and speak, please state your name and address for the record. And each member of the public has three minutes to speak. Please step up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
My name is Rodney Solomon. My address is currently 2 Heron Drive, Marlboro, New Jersey. So, homelessness love everybody and councilman, mayor, council members. I appreciate your time for allowing me to speak on this microphone. I just wanted to come to this meeting to just share a little bit about the organization that I co-founded about three years ago with me and a good friend of mine, Michael Mills. It's called Conscious Youth Development and Service. And our mission is to prepare and create future leaders through holistic interventions. And my purpose for being here is to really express that message of how we could form a better connection with the city so that we could be involved in a harmonious way to make the greatest impact. We have been involved, currently in the school, school system in Asbury Park and the middle school and high school full-time, where we do programs of social, emotional learning, mindfulness, yoga, meditation, character development, and life skills. We also provide community events from meditation sits. We also do yoga sits in the Neptune Library. We do community events of open mics to allow people to express themselves, but just to more so form a better connection with themselves so that we could really allow our light from within to shine, to make a greater impact on the world outside of ourselves. And, we're actually doing a summer program this year for free, since our third year of doing it, for the youth of Asbury Park. It's two, three-week summer programs, four days a week. And the foundation is on social, emotional learning, mindfulness, yoga, meditation, character development, life skills, to really empower them to become the best that they can be in this world that we're living in. So, just wanted to share and just communicate, because this is the first time I've ever actually showed my face to a meeting. But thanks to Yvonne Clayton, she has said to, hey man, speak up, you know, talk to what you're about and what we're doing. And just seeing how any way that we could communicate and connect with each other so we can make a greater impact that's in harmony with the mayor's Wellness Community Committee and other aspects that are really trying to transform, transform the community of Asbury Park. So, that's all from me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing, the program that Rodney and Michael have been working with has been active in the school system. And this year, their socio-emotional program has been credited with reducing in-school suspensions by 80%. So, I think they are to be recommended and congratulated for the work they've been doing for their children. Thank you.
And I agree, and it's too bad nobody knows what, we know what you're doing. So, at the 23rd meeting, if you'd like to come to the work sessions, spend five to 10 minutes to make a presentation like.
May 23?
Yes.
Okay.
And, at 6 o'clock during the work session, you can make a presentation that everybody can get. Instead of three minutes, you'll have 10 to 15 minutes to make a presentation that everybody know what exactly you're doing to get more support. So, I would definitely invite you to be there on the 23rd.
Yes, we will be there. And also too, two seconds left, we're having a fundraiser event this Friday at the Danny Clinch Transplant at the Asbury Park Hotel to raise money for our summer program. So, anyone is welcome, 5:30 to 9:30.
Thank you and Michael so much. Put them on for the work session. You'll confirm with Cindy for the 23rd? Okay.
Hi, I'm Andy Donohue, A-N-D-I-E-D-O-N-O-H-U-E. I've been misidentified in the past. I just wanted to follow up with the results from two weeks ago. With the assistance of Salt and their kind invitation to have other people from, who are hiring from within the city, we had 23 local applicants that we can say are in the process of onboarding. And that would not have happened without all of us working together. So, thank you so much and thanks to the council and the mayor and everyone for your support for that. And we are looking forward to continuing hiring from people here and within our community. Thank you.
Again, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayla Grant. My address is 460 Myrtle Avenue, Neptune, New Jersey.
And hello, my name is Katherine Nelson. My address is 1503 Stratford Avenue.
We are part of the Robert Wood Johnson Program within the Boys and Girls Club. We have a plan in the summer, starting in July, to feed the youth from Monday through Thursday, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And overall, we want to feed children healthy foods and teach healthy habits. We are receiving training from fulfill and receiving produce from potential sponsors like Dean's Market, Wegmans, and Whole Foods. The program has a goal to promote healthy lifestyles, because many people within our community are suffering from diseases like diabetes and heart disease due to their poor eating habits. To overcome this problem in the community, we are going to teach activities like meditation and yoga and also teaching healthy eating habits and promoting life skills. As a part of the feeding, our feeding program, we will teach about what is healthy and how to feed the body with nourishment.
So, not only will we feed the youth, we will, we are also giving teens volunteer opportunities to make positive change within the community. In order to gain children to participate, we will advertise the program within the four Asbury Park schools and around the community. Overall, we want to improve community health, provide a safe space for youth learning and recreation, and decrease the number of youth, of youth people that are in the streets and not in a safe place. From the program, we ideally want young people to learn social skills, proper etiquette, healthy eating, and how to commit to making a change in the community. We have the ideas to create an impactful program for Asbury Park, but we just need exposure, advertisement funding, advertisement funding, transportation for kids, and extra volunteers from the city. We would like to, we would like the volunteers to run activities with the program two days a week. And any and all donations for our program will be accepted. Thank you so much for your time.
Anything we can do to help get out the word, you can get in touch with us, our communications director, we can put it up on our Facebook page. Anything you need from us to help anyway, that way, please just let us know.
Could you tell us where people could make a donation?
So, go through Doug in the Boys Club?
Great, thank you.
No, thank, thank you.
Hi, Tila Cinski, 3rd Avenue in Asbury Park. First off, I want to thank the city council and the city and the departments for their assistance in helping with Wesley Lake and everything that needs to be done, whether it be the grounds, the spillway, the lowering of the lake, the cleanups, and all the volunteers from the council that attend. And any efforts for grant funding, I appreciate that. But there's a lot to be done in regard to stormwater management. As you know, the, I've, you've heard this before, the various active construction sites in the city, they don't follow the stormwater regulations and the enforcement of that is not that swift. I myself have done online complaints with the DEP and I have sent emails, I've taken pictures, and I don't get much response. The city does get more response than I do, but the response that is, is done by the construction sites is maybe lasts a day or two, and they don't follow up. Specifically, Memorial Drive down by Springwood, the transportation construction site in the side street, and 3rd Avenue and Main Street has a problem with Ocean Avenue site at Kingsley and 3rd still continues to have runoff into the street. So, there's a lot of things to be done. There's other sites that I have not gone around to see, but I am hopeful that some of the members of the workforce can go out and enforce the regulations, which they should be doing. I mean, I call all the time and I'm sure other residents do, but I think it's the lacks of, or maybe not knowing that they can do that, maybe if they can revisit that. And the second thing is, of course, the traffic on 3rd Avenue and 4th Avenue. I have sent various emails and suggestions and there, I appreciate the lining and the signage that is done on 3rd Avenue and it's great, but most drivers don't read. And they don't pay attention, nor do they care. And the trucks don't care that there's a national truck route. We don't have enforcement and it really needs to be done, it's unsafe. Drivers only see about one-fourth or one-fifth of the road when they go 40 miles an hour. It gets better when they decrease and at 15, they can hear, see 100%. So, accidents happen a lot more, the faster it goes, and the noise is atrocious. And I've been there almost four years and it's unbearable. So, I have some pamphlets here, Construction Bad Practices and Stormwater Regulation Rules, and a business plan that a city of, in California have done for their construction and environmental regulations for the departments to follow. I have traffic calming and a few other things here that I'll give to the mayor so maybe that they can revisit this and resolve it, because it's pretty bad. Thank you.
Thank you, T, and I know you do complain and most of your complaints are legit and we do try to look into them as quick as possible. Some of the ones you called in, be it 3rd and Main, we had the planning board send their engineer out to make sure everything was in compliance and they said everything was in compliance. So, we are following, well, we do follow through.
I'm not saying you don't follow.
No, I know, but I.
But why do we have to get that far that I have to call, what to complain to you?
Okay, that's something we will try to correct as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rena Moreno, Eighth Avenue. In the bill resolution on the front cover, it says that the debt service is $466,000. Is that for a quarter, or is that for a half a year, or is that for a whole year? And also, in the bill resolution, is another- What passed the last, last meeting, you passed something, 2014, 2018-14. It was the cap, I think it was called the cap bank. I was wondering why we had to pass that when our budget was increased by 2 million. And now, it's going to, if you want, I know it's not cash in the cap bank, but it's there in case you need it. Why would we need it if we're increasing the budget by 2 million? Those are my two questions. The debt service, $466,000, and the bank cap.
Okay, that, the 466, that's for this month.
What? That's a monthly?
No, that's what's being billed this month. So, I don't know if that's quarter, what, but that's, that's, this bills and claims is for the month that we're doing now. So, yes, it says debt service 466, 563.
I'm sure the city manager knows.
If he doesn't, we'll get back to you tomorrow. As far as the cap, we explained in the last meeting, I think you were here, and I think we've explained the last two years.
I know.
It's a reserve for an emergency. If we had another Sandy, we had to go borrow money. Now, the money's there in line instead of like panicking after Sandy, not having the chance to borrow the money or somebody gouging us at 18% instead of locking in at whatever percent we're locked in now. So, have we used it the last couple of years? No. But do we put it aside in case we need it? Yes, I think every other responsible town does the same thing, and you're hoping like heck you never have to use it. But goodness gracious, if there is an emergency, if the entire sewer system collapsed or the sewer plant went bad, I mean, and we have to, it's an emergency, we need money. We're, have it lined up. Not to have it lined up would be, I think, an error on our part and probably totally irresponsible. We have not used it the last several years. Hopefully, we will not use it this year. Michael, correct me on anything I'm wrong. You are right.
But on the debt service, you don't know if that's a quarter or a half a year or a whole year?
I'll get you that information tomorrow.
Okay, the other thing, oh, okay. I just wanted to say, when you vote on the money item, shouldn't there be five people there? The last meeting, there was only four.
No.
And you voted on the cap. Not that you, I know it's not real money. I know it's just there, but don't you need five people to vote on that?
No.
Money item?
No.
No?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, jury scramble, Long Branch. I got a question. Who goes over to CFOs on properties, let's say they've been owned for 10 years, five years, three years? Because there's some buildings on the West Side where they just move in new people, and they're not sure whether they have CFOs. Is there any way that someone can like triple-check to make sure the COs are for the people living in the building? Is there any way there's a, a check and balance system for that? And if we don't have it, maybe you guys could have one. The other thing is, because some people are losing their tax appeals, is there any way to project what, what or how many new ratables may come on the market for Asbury Park for the year? Is there any way to project that, new building or new condos or whatever that's going to be new so people can have more information to file their tax appeal? The other thing is, is there another way, or you could think about making an ordinance, where people could turn their homes into BMWs with, and lighten up on the parking restrictions? Because I think if you have BMWs, we can monitor the businesses better than Airbnbs. And that may be another way to do it. It's just a suggestion, if you could look into that. The other thing is, to make this a more friendly town, are the police officers going to be walking the beach? Are they going to ride in their cars on hot days with the air conditioning on and the windows up? I think we need police officers to walk the beach. They talk about it in New York City. We should have it here. And then the last news I want to share, Long Branch has a new mayor, John Pallone won, and, but he had a heart attack yesterday in the morning, so he's going to maybe be out by Thursday or Friday. So, what I wanted to share with you guys is, maybe we could talk to Long Branch about sharing ideas about getting tourism to come down to the Jersey Shore because they have a large tourist population. We have a large tourist population. Maybe we can share the cost and get the same people to come to both towns. I'd just like you guys to look into that. So, that's about it. And that, and in July, they swear in the new mayor, so you have plenty of time to, to reach out to John Pallone. So, you like the idea about the B&amp;B? Would you look into that and see if that could be done?
We'll look-
At least we could monitor it.
I don't know how you-
We'll look into it, but-
It's state regulation.
Right. I think it's kind of like dead on arrival because-
Well, you're going to have Airbnb then, and you can't monitor that.
Well, that's why, that's why we, that's why we've got the short-term rental ordinance.
We put in the application, you, we limited the cars in the short-term rental application.
Short-term rental, we regulate, bed and breakfasts is regulated at the state level.
Pardon me?
Bed and breakfasts are regulated at the state level.
I know, but I thought if you could make people allow that to do that, do with the houses, at least it could be monitored. Where Airbnb, people are going to do-
We monitor, we monitor the short-term rental. We can't monitor-
Oh, you, you have, you're checking all the sites where people may be secretive when they post up rooms to-
We have software that does that.
Okay, I didn't know.
We check the top 20 short-term rental sites. This is, we have a software called Host Compliance that goes, that aggregates all 20 sites.
And then the people are aware, when they're caught, the penalties will be high, okay? And then what about the policemen walking the beat?
We have walking patrols now. We always have, and-
And bikes.
And bicycle patrols, so yes.
No, bicycle patrols are good, but people had said they would like to see policemen walk in the streets. I'm, okay, thanks for listening to me, guys.
Thank you. And as far as getting in touch with Mayor Lex Pallone, no problem. First of all, I just want him to be healthy and get out of the hospital.
Well, tomorrow or Friday. They, they announced it last night at his victory party.
Okay.
We were wondering why he wasn't riding around in the convertible, you know?
Motion to close.
Motion.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes of April 25, 2018. Workshop minutes of April 25, 2018, and a regular session minutes of April 25, 2018. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to adoption of the 2018 municipal budget. First is Resolution 2018-177. This is a resolution to read the budget by title only. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution, please? Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-170. This is a resolution to amend the 2018 calendar year budget. This was also brought up at the last meeting. Can I have a motion to open this resolution to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Seeing none, can I have a motion to close, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-141. This is the adoption of the 2018 municipal budget. Can I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Seeing none, can I have a motion to close, please?
Move it.
Motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agenda. I did remove the special events application and move that to the individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-181, resolution to credit sewer account for Block 3105, Lot 5, 527 Link Avenue. Resolution 2018-182, resolution recognizing no bids received. Resolution 2018-183, resolution to terminate sewer account billing for Block 2405, Lot 7, or Lot 1, for 722 Clifford Avenue. And 2018-184, resolution approving companion, companion animal welfare pledge. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to individual resolutions. The first is Resolution 2018-179, resolution approving the special events application. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Count a second, please?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2018-185, resolution approving payment of bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-186, resolution entering into an MOU. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
We have a second? Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-187. It was recommended to table this resolution to the next-
Motion to table.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-188, resolution to amend the city, and the council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the expansion, which is a place-to-place transfer of the hotel liquor license issued to 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I'm going to make a comment before I give my vote on this. I'm going to be really clear that I think the Asbury Hotel and the SALT School are amazing assets to the city, and I happily voted on the Asbury Hotel's boutique, for lack of a better word, liquor license. What I find, and what I have the problem with, is the continued expansion of these liquor licenses. So, Ice Star had an opportunity to buy a liquor license for Asbury Lanes because there's 42 in the city, and the city should probably have approximately seven, give or take. And they did not buy a liquor license for Asbury Lanes. I'm also deeply troubled that Trenton continues to approve these expansions of liquor licenses. The last thing Asbury Park needs is more booze, and I say that as a person who's a drinker. So, I am voting no on this. This has absolutely nothing to do with the hotel. This has nothing to do with the SALT School. I think you are amazing assets to this city, and Ice Star should have bought you a liquor license. I'm done. So, I vote no.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-189, resolution authorizing the purchase of surveillance and access control security system. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-190, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate a pilot valet parking service. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.